Everybody, I will call to order the city council, the regular city council meeting, which is a virtual meeting held via WebEx of April 28th, 2020. And we will start with a call to order, excuse me, a roll call, taking attendance by analyst Martinez-Gavinia.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start with you, Mayor Reagan Gonzalez. Here. Councilmember Supple.
Here.
Councilmember Troutman.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia. Councilmember Wayland. Councilmember Wayland, I see you, but I was not able to hear you.
Can you hear me? I am here.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is the open forum, and then I will go back to analyst Martinez-Gavinia. If you could just share if anyone submitted for the open forum? And then could you please just remind the public of the process for the open forum with our WebEx structure?
Thank you, Mayor Reagan Gonzalez. We do not have any comments from the public. Again, the public is welcome to submit any comments for the open forum, and they can either send an email to Kelly, and her email is K-W-N-N@richfieldmn.gov, or they can call at 612-861-9701, 9711.
Thank you very much. Seeing as nobody submitted comments for the open forum, I ask everyone to please unmute your microphones and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great旗帜, which stands: Nation, mother, God, indivisible, liberate. Thank you, everybody. The next item is the approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of April 14th, 2020.
Councilmember Wayland, I will move to the minutes.
Councilmember Supple, I'll second.
The motion has been moved by councilmember Wayland and seconded. Oh, I'm sorry. Analyst Martinez, that's the part that you do, right?
Sorry. All right.
And I'll take roll call. Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman.
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia. Councilmember. Oh, she's on.
Yeah, I'm on.
Councilmember Garcia. Councilmember Wayland.
Aye.
So we have five ayes and zero nays. Thank you. The minutes have been approved. Welcome, Councilmember Garcia.
Gracias. You know, you know, you know why I decided to do it like this?
Why?
Because I needed a haircut in the worst way, and I gave myself a haircut. Then I put on my bad hair day hat, where in case I did have to go on the screen, so I could take off my hat, because you can't see my hair now.
We are so thankful we don't have to see your new haircut. Thank you so much, Councilmember Garcia.
Well, smarty pants.
Okay, just a quick question, analyst Martinez-Gavinia. So, councilmember will move in second, but then I do not say that it's been moved and seconded, and by whom? You do that, or do I do that part?
You still do that. I only take roll call.
Got it. Excellent. Thank you. That's what I thought. All right. The next items are our presentations. The first item is a moment of silence to celebrate the life of Margarita Troutman, the dear mother of councilmember Troutman. So I ask everyone to please observe a moment of silence right now. Thank you. Thank you very much. And I'd like to pass it to councilmember Troutman to share a little bit about your mother.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just want to say thank you to all my colleagues and the mayor and all the city staff and our residents in our community for reaching out with their condolences to our family. My mom, Margarita Troutman, of Cordoba, was moved to Richfield in 1987, and she made Richfield her home for generations. She was an entrepreneur and an educator and an incredible mother. And we lost her to Alzheimer's and we lost her to COVID, but we had her for so many years, and we're blessed by her life. And I'm glad for this opportunity, just to honor her memory.
Thank you, councilmember Troutman, for sharing those words. I wanted to open it up to any other councilmembers who might want to share anything.
Yeah, I will. You know, Simon, losing a mom is very, very hard. That's the first person you meet when you're, you know, when you come into this world. And it's your whole life, really, and you were going to miss her on a daily basis for a long time. And then you'll be a little bit calmer. You'll reflect on all the good memories that you had and that your family had together. And I sympathize with your dad, because from what I understand, that was a really real love story, because he was able to visit your mom every single day, every single day. And not very many people do that, and that takes a lot of dedication, love, and devotion. And so my heart goes out to all of you, your family, Simon.
Thank you. Thank you, friend.
You bet.
Councilmember Supple.
First of all, condolences, councilmember Troutman, to you and your whole family. And also, thank you for sharing the beautiful tribute to your mom and her legacy of love and community building. And it was just really wonderful to read all about your mother. Please accept our condolences.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Wayland.
Yeah, I just want to express my sympathy as well. I know grieving is hard enough, as it is grieving as a public figure can be even harder. But I really appreciate, as councilmember Supple was saying, how you've celebrated her life. And I think unfortunately, in the reality we're in, I think there's a chance that we may all be a little more acquainted with death in the year to come than we might like. And I appreciate you modeling how to, yeah, how to celebrate the life well-lived of people. And yeah, so sympathizing with you and thinking of you on a regular basis. And I know it doesn't necessarily get easier soon, but yeah, thinking of you regularly.
Thanks, brother.
And councilmember Troutman, I also just want to echo my condolences for you and your family. And thank you for sharing the story of your family and your mom. And over the years, I know that your leadership in the dementia friends work that we're doing as a city was really motivated by your mom, and we're very appreciative of that. And I also just want to express, I can't imagine how difficult this would have been for you to lose your mom to COVID and not being able to connect with her physically like maybe you would have been able to at another time. So I just want to acknowledge that. And we're here for you. We support you. We love you. We love your family. And we suffer your loss as well, so we're thinking about you.
Thanks, Mayor. And I just appreciate you guys, your colleagues and your friends. Yeah, and just earlier this week, my five-year-old, my youngest son, he came up to me, and I just share this just because I know this disease is impacting all of us. And there's no perfect way to grieve or go through loss. But my five-year-old son, he said, is this disease going to be around for a long time? He says, this is going to be a long time. This disease is here. Yeah, and I had to say, you know, it might be, son. And he went right up to our window in our guest room, and he looked out of the backyard, and he said, "I hate you, coronavirus." And then he went back to playing. And, you know, there's no right or wrong way to do that, but I just felt like that is just a great example of, you know, just an honest response, but, you know, that he felt. And but then he went back to doing the thing that he was doing, and that's okay. That's good. But thank you, guys. Thank you. Thank you. My mom, I'm sure sees this and is blessed. We love your mom.
Thank you for sharing that, councilmember. The next item is the proclamation observing Earth Day, Arbor Day, and Arbor Month. So let me scroll down here to the proclamation. I just wanted to ask a clarifying question on this one before I read the proclamation. I see Director Markle on the line as well. Is there any information from staff that you want to share about the proclamation, the work we're doing for Arbor Day and Earth Day, or should I just read the proclamation?
Thank you, Mayor. We just got done with recognizing Earth Week last week. So every day of the week, we had a different theme, and we were trying to connect with residents virtually. So we created a webpage with resources and activities and more information for people to utilize at home. And we got some positive feedback from the community. Arbor Day, we are going to be planting trees when we are back on site in our work locations. We'll be planting a couple of trees at Woodlake Nature Center, as we're a Tree City USA. And then, you know, throughout the summer, we have a tree planting program. We'll be planting them as needed throughout the city.
Thank you so much, Director Markle. I know I have heard from several of our residents. They really have appreciated all the work that your department is doing to help keep our residents engaged still and connected and utilizing the parks and doing these great types of things, to remind folks that we still have Mother Nature out there that we can enjoy and find ways to connect with during this time. So I'll read this proclamation, and then I understand I'll sign it at another time. So the proclamation of the city of Richfield, whereas Earth Day was celebrated nationwide on Wednesday, April 22nd, to bring awareness about the need to care for the environment. And whereas Arbor Day is celebrated nationwide on Friday, April 24th, and Arbor Month is celebrated in Minnesota during the month of May to promote the value in planting of trees. And whereas the Richfield Forestry Division participates in the Tree City USA program to promote efforts to preserve, maintain, and manage the health of Richfield's urban forests. And whereas Richfield has successfully implemented an organic drop-off program that lowers the city's environmental footprint and contributes to the city's overall actions of stewardship. And whereas the community of Richfield is encouraged to participate in park cleanup efforts in April and May, as well as to demonstrate good stewardship of our green spaces and natural resources. And whereas Earth Day and Arbor Day will be celebrated by the city of Richfield through a virtual week-long celebration on April 20th through 24th, and events will be postponed until a safer later date. And whereas trees and forests produce clean air, naturally filtered groundwater, provide a setting that reduces stress and improves mental health, reduces exposure to the sun's UV rays, and provides home to many animal species. Now, therefore, I, Maria Reagan Gonzalez, mayor of the city of Richfield, do proclaim that the city of Richfield observes Earth Day, Arbor Day, and Arbor Month as we are promoting environmental stewardship and mindful of choices that preserve our natural habitats, proclaimed on this 28th day of April, 2020. This is very exciting. I just wanted to add one little thing. I've been seeing young students and children on social media, and this reminded me of that, that are going around to our parks and picking up trash as they're going out on walks. So I just want to say thank you to all of our young residents for taking such leadership and helping keep our parks and green spaces clean. Are there any other comments from councilmembers? Great. I will go to our next item. The next item is the consent calendar, and I will go to city manager Rodriguez.
Mayor, I think it's approval of the agenda first.
Sorry, I'm going down the packet instead of going back up to the schedule. There we go. Okay, the next item is the approval of the agenda.
So moved, Simon Troutman.
Councilmember Wayland will second.
Thank you. It was moved by councilmember Troutman and seconded by councilmember Wayland. And if we can go to analyst Martinez-Gavinia for the roll call vote, please.
Yes. Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman.
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia.
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland.
Aye.
Five ayes and zero nays.
The agenda has been approved. Now, the next item is the consent calendar, which goes to city manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. The consent calendar contains several separate items, which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved. No further council action on these items is necessary. On tonight's consent calendar are three items. Item A, consider the approval of a resolution that includes a declaration of restrictive covenants for the Seven Hills Propertory Academy playground in the city of Richfield. In conjunction with the agreement, also approval of the Hennebun County Sports Program Playground Application that will be submitted in partnership with the school. The city of Richfield would act as the local government unit for the local charter school. Item B, consider adoption of a resolution supporting Ad Livable Communities Demonstration Act Predevelopment Grant Application to the Metropolitan Council to support the redevelopment of 6501 Penn Avenue South. Item C, consider the adoption of a resolution approving the statewide Public Works, Joint Powers Mutual Aid Agreement, and Equipment Sharing Agreement. I submit these items for your consideration as part of the consent calendar.
Thank you, city manager Rodriguez. Is there a motion?
Councilmember Supple. Oh, go ahead.
I'll move the consent calendar, but I wanted to say something too.
All right. Second, councilmember Supple.
Okay, the consent calendar has been moved by councilmember Garcia and seconded by councilmember Supple. Council comments with councilmember Garcia.
Yeah, you know, I wanted to say that, you know, we have Seven Hills, and then we have the Partnership Academy on Nicklet. And I thought it was really nice that Partnership Academy was supporting this. And I really appreciate when people can work well together and coordinate and really look out for each other. So I appreciated the schools doing that.
Thank you, councilmember Garcia. Any other council comments? Councilmember Supple.
In a similar fashion, I think the sharing of resources with other municipalities is also a good thing, that we can all work together and use the taxpayer money to the best of our ability, but also help each other out during the pandemic. So I was really happy to see that.
Councilmember Troutman.
My thoughts are along similar lines, but I just wanted to call out and thank our city staff for supporting these grant opportunities, both for Seven Hills and specifically the city manager Rodriguez's old stomping grounds with the Met Council, supporting these opportunities, because grants, people who've never written grants before, they're not, those are not given funds. They're not always easy to get. And I just appreciate our staff supporting those initiatives.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Analyst Martinez-Gavinia, if you could please take roll call vote.
Yes. Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman.
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia.
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland.
Aye.
We have five ayes and zero nays.
Thank you. The consent calendar has been approved. The next item, number six, goes to councilmember Wayland.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me just find the part of this here. So this item is to consider the, nope, more to scroll through. Give me a second. Yes, so this item is to a public hearing and then to consider a resolution approving a final plat of the RF-64 Town Homes Edition related to the completion of a portion of the RF-64 development at 65th Street and 16th Avenue. Development plans for the RF-64 project, previously known as Peter Point 2, were first approved by the city council in September of 2018 and amended in December of 2019. The project consists of two apartment buildings on Richfield Parkway and 64 townhomes, 16 townhome buildings of four units each, along 16th Avenue. The first two townhome buildings, or eight units, are currently under construction in the southwest corner of the project at 16th and 65th Street. The proposed final plat will subdivide the property into eighteen, eight, sorry, into eight townhome lots and various outlots for common areas. It is anticipated that a final plat for the remainder of the development will become before the council later this year, as those phases begin construction. The proposed plat has been reviewed by the city attorney's office and Richfield Public Works. All comments have been addressed or included as stipulations in the resolution. While a public hearing is required by state statute, the plat is a technical document dealing with the combination or division of land and is not a reconsideration of land use approvals for the development. The proposed plat meets requirements, and therefore, staff recommends approval of the attached resolution. And Director Stark, I see you're on the call. Did you have any more to add from staff?
Thank you, councilmember Wayland. No, I really don't. I don't know if people have the plat in front of them. As councilmember Wayland said, it's for the eight townhomes currently under construction. And see, those is Lot 1, blocks 1 through 4, and Lot 2, blocks 1 through 4, or parcels 1 through 4. And then the outlots, one is for a shared driveway for the townhomes. That's Outlet A. Outlet C is eventually, I believe, going to be used by the apartments to the east as part of their stormwater area and parking. And then the Outlet B, to the north, could eventually become part of a new townhome development when the developer is able to purchase the one remaining home. So with that, I would stand for any questions you might have.
Questions from councilmembers? I would just like to make a comment and say, they're right by my home, and I get to walk by them on a pretty regular basis, these townhomes. And I am very excited to have this type of housing stock in our community. They look like great quality, great homes. I think it adds to the character of our city. And it's just been great to be able to see them on my daily walk around Taft Park. So I'm very excited. And, you know, I haven't been a part of this from the very beginning. I know staff has been there from the very beginning and some of the folks on the development team. So I can't imagine what it's like for you, but I've only been on the tail end, and it's just so exciting. I can't wait.
With no, not seeing any other comments, I would open up the public hearing. And I will pass it to analyst Martinez-Gavinia to ask if we've had any members of the public submit comment for the public hearing.
Thank you, councilmember Wayland. We did not have any submissions for public comments.
Okay, thank you. Then with that, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Or I would make the motion to close the public hearing. Sorry.
Second, Simon Troutman.
Okay, the motion has been made by councilmember Wayland and seconded by councilmember Troutman. Analyst Martinez-Gavinia, if you could please take the roll call vote.
Yes. Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman.
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia. Councilmember Garcia.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Wayland.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
And then that's just for the closing of the public hearing. Is that correct, or is that for the full motion?
That was just for the closing of the public hearing.
The public hearing has been closed. Thank you.
So then I will make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a final plat of the RF-64 Town Homes Edition.
Councilmember Supple, second.
Thank you. The motion has been made by councilmember Wayland and seconded by councilmember Supple. Analyst Martinez-Gavinia, could you please take the roll call vote?
Yes. Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman.
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia.
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you. The motion has been approved. Thank you very much. The next item, item number seven, goes to councilmember Supple.
Thank you, Mayor Reagan Gonzalez. This item is to consider the adoption of an emergency ordinance to provide emergency rental assistance that will provide temporary relief for households in the city experiencing financial hardship due to the COVID-19 crisis. The COVID-19 crisis is having a negative economic impact on Richfield residents. Job losses and reduction in income create food insecurity and housing instability, especially for low-income households. The city annually provides funding to the volunteers enlisted to assist people, or VEIP, to provide emergency rent and food assistance to Richfield households earning less than 200% of the federal poverty guidelines. And VEIP has seen a significant increase in requests for assistance for both food and rent since the state's stay-at-home order was enacted. In response to this increased need, the Housing and Redevelopment Authority approved an agreement with VEIP on April 20th, 2020, providing $30,000 in funding to expand its emergency rental assistance program to low-income renters financially impacted by the crisis. In order to authorize this rental assistance program, In order to authorize this rental assistance, the HRA and city attorneys recommend that the city pass an emergency ordinance creating an affordable housing trust fund. Rent assistance is an explicitly listed activity authorized in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund statute. The HRA would be the administrator of the trust fund and contribute funding from its capital improvement fund. VEIP would then be provided funds from the trust fund for emergency rental assistance. VEIP anticipates that the need for rental assistance due to the crisis is likely to extend for several more months, which would require additional funding. The best way to provide additional funding, if needed, would be to create a permanent affordable housing trust fund through the city ordinance process. Work on this ordinance is underway and the item will likely come before the council for further consideration in May or June. Also, VEIP anticipates another surge in demand once the eviction moratorium is lifted. And while there is currently a moratorium on evictions, rent will eventually be due and payable. We have heard from several landlords who are willing to work out payment plans for residents, but it will still be difficult for people to meet these financial obligations and for landlords to make their own mortgage payments absent rent payment. So the adoption of an emergency order requires a unanimous vote and the emergency ordinance will become effective immediately upon adoption. Is there anything that staff would like to add?
Thank you, Councilmember Supple. You know, I would just add that HRA staff is looking into our budget to identify additional funding if if the need continues, which we expect it would. I know Housing and Redevelopment Manager Julie Urban is on the meeting as well. I don't know if Julie has anything to add.
Mayor and members of the council, I would just add that I think since I wrote the staff report, there's been the CDVG CV money has become available through Hennepin County. They put out a mini RFP. And I believe VEIP is going to get money from that quite soon and the recommended amount is a hundred and fifty thousand for both Richfield and Edina residents, and so that's a positive step. And so we anticipate there may still be needs beyond that, so the HRA will be ready to respond. But that money is also going to be available quite soon, so that's good news.
I just want to take a moment to thank staff for doing all the research behind this and finding the best way to do it and the way to meet this need because we've been hearing from a lot of community members that this is a real, real need and I'm very thankful for staff for finding a way that we could help people out. I'm going to move that we approve an emergency ordinance creating an affordable housing trust fund to provide emergency rental assistance for low-income Richfield renters impacted by the COVID nineteen crisis and to adopt a resolution authorizing summary publication of said ordinance.
Second, Simon Troutman.
Motion has been made by Councilmember Supple and seconded by Councilmember Troutman. Any council comments or questions?
I just wanted to say-
Oh, Councilmember Garcia?
Yes, I I should identify myself when I speak, I know, but I just wanted to say that I I volunteered at VEIP and I was the Spanish translator and I worked at the Pankit at the same time. And one of the things that really impresses me about VEIP is that when someone makes a donation to VEIP, it tends to go to to the people that use the VEIP services. So in other words, they just post a lot of, a lot of nonprofits, they they get, you know, they they have, they have a lot of money that goes to staff, not so at VEIP. Most of the, most of the money goes directly back into the community of people helping people. And I think the HRA and the staff, thank you for your leadership in making this happen because that's another thing that we do is we cooperate and we coordinate.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcia. Councilmember Wayland?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to to thank, also thank our our staff and the HRA for working on this. I know I and several other council members and city staff have spoken with our our state and national elected leadership about the need for for rental assistance in this time, that that is a huge need and one that has yet to be addressed. But I appreciate, I know we don't have the budget of the state or federal government certainly, but I appreciate us doing what we can on the local level. So I'm enthusiastically going to vote yes for this and also in the future, it would would approve or think it's worth looking more into the permanent affordable housing trust fund. I think that'll give us some flexibility for, both for this and for some other important efforts in the future. So thanks for the work and I'm excited that we're we're able to offer this because VEIP is is truly doing some wonderful work for our our community in ways that go above and beyond what I've what I've seen in other communities. So happy to support them.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Councilmember Troutman?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just gonna echo everybody else's comments and just gratefulness to VEIP and to our staff, but specifically for for making a pathway that now as Julie Urban is is maybe identifying some additional funds through CDVG grants. You know, we we do the work now for opportunities that are going to come along later. And so even though this is a small amount, I just want to, I want to call it out as just like building, what doing exactly what city government should be doing, which is building good infrastructure and structures and putting those in place for opportunities as they as they come along and and just as as a more, as a more personal note, folks know that this is a small amount of money. It won't be a small amount of money to the people who who have homes as opposed to are homeless. And so I want to recognize that. And I also just want to recognize to folks that may listen to this. It, there are, we can't, we can't spend time thinking about how small our tools are relative to the need and how other other agencies or other governments or other people are going to step up to the need. And I just want to thank our staff for leaning into this problem that's that's too big for us to handle on our own and and just for folks that are in in that situation where they can't make their rent and they don't know what to do. It's an embarrassing situation to be in. It's a scary situation and I just want to encourage those folks. Don't be quiet. Don't be silent. Reach out, reach out to us, reach out to the city, reach out to your friends and neighbors and friends and neighbors. Please take the time to reach out to your friends and neighbors because it's not an easy process and we all would be shocked to know how many people are struggling in unique ways and maybe not so unique ways because we're all in this together. So I'm off my soapbox, but need to get that off my chest.
Councilmember Supple?
I just want to clarify and staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but these funds are going to be specifically for people who live in Richfield. Is that correct? Because I know there had been some confusion and the VEIP lines got swamped with people from all over and we want to make sure that people know who can benefit from this.
Yes, and and so VEIP serves Richfield, they serve Bloomington, Edina, and then South Minneapolis. And I believe that's south of Fiftieth Street and I can't remember the east-west cross. Yes, we know the need is great and so the calls to all these social service agencies have just been kind of overwhelming and VEIP is doing its best to be able to respond to those, but you know, their voicemail has a capacity of a hundred messages and and they max that out regularly. So I actually have a call in with them tomorrow to talk about access and access for our Spanish-speaking residents and how to make sure that people get services. And we wish that we had enough money to to help everyone, but you know, we're doing what we can, so.
Just to be, just to be clear, Councilperson Supple, yes, the thirty thousand dollars that is being pledged by the HRA that's going through this activity will solely be for Richfield residents.
All right, thank you.
And then I just, I am very thankful for also the approach of not using all of the funding that we do have HRA funding upfront, knowing that while the need is high right now, this is going to be an ongoing and continued need. And we're not even talking about recovery yet. But then there will be recovery as well. So I appreciate the HRA and staff's approach to really I'm doing this incrementally to make sure that we continue to provide consistent support to our residents over time. And again, this is just another example, one of so many examples during COVID, but also before COVID that our staff and community have really come together to respond very quickly to an emerging community need, have used creativity and partnership to make that happen. And and again, appreciative and accolades to our staff, to our community partners like VEIP, to our organizations that are referring our residents to VEIP and everyone that's that's helped. We are very fortunate to have this infrastructure that we can leverage. I've talked to to leaders in other communities and and other communities have similar social service agencies and then some other communities don't. And and I don't know what we would have done without the support and the backbone of of VEIP that was already in place. So we are, once again, very fortunate and I thank our staff for all of your work on this. Okay, so I I am last now. We moved and seconded comments. Now, analyst Martinez Gavina, could you please take, we, did we do roll call vote?
No, we haven't, Mayor.
Could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Supple?
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman?
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia?
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland?
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you. And the motion has been approved. There's two motions. The first motion that was just approved is for the emergency ordinance creating an affordable housing trust fund to provide emergency rental assistance for low-income Richfield residents impacted by the COVID nineteen crisis. Is there a motion for the second resolution?
Madam Mayor, I moved both of them, but we can do it again if you'd like to.
Let's see, city manager Rodriguez, are are we fine with the two together?
I'll refer to Mary, Attorney Tien, but I think it should be fine.
It was fine. Councilmembers Supple moved them together and that's perfectly.
Excellent. Thank you. Well, then both motions, I'll read through the second one then. The second one is adopting a resolution authorizing summary publication of said ordinance. Thank you very much. This is very exciting. Now I just got to scroll to the next item. Okay, and I have the next item, which is consideration of accepting the pricing committee's recommendation for the sale of a five million dollar, three hundred seventy-five thousand general obligation bonds, series twenty twenty-eight. At the March tenth, twenty twenty city council meeting, the city council approved a resolution providing for the sale of the five million, three hundred seventy-five thousand general obligation bonds, series twenty twenty-eight. However, subsequent to the meeting on March tenth, twenty twenty, and due to the spread of COVID nineteen pandemic worldwide, the financial markets fluctuated dramatically. According to the interest, accordingly, the interest cost for the issuance of the bonds also fluctuated, potentially increasing the cost of the bonds from the March tenth, twenty twenty levels. As a result, and in order to provide flexibility for the sale of the twenty twenty-eight bonds for the city, staff brought before the city council a parameter resolution at the April fourteenth, twenty twenty city council meeting for approval. The parameter resolution was established, will establish, the parameters resolution will establish parameters on what the city council will approve with the fluctuating market conditions, as well as the ability to move the sale date if market conditions do not look favorable and the anticipated sale date of April twenty eighth. In addition, the parameter resolutions established a pricing committee with respect to the twenty twenty-eight bonds that will comprise of the mayor, city manager, finance director, and the city's municipal advisor. The pricing committee is responsible with selecting the best proposal and awarding the sale to the respective bidder. The series twenty twenty-eight bonds will accomplish the following. One second. I'm home alone with the babies. Okay, the series twenty twenty, twenty twenty-eight bonds will accomplish the following. Provide the second phase of funding for the Lindo Avenue construction project with a three million, one hundred and twenty thousand par bond. Debt service of this portion of the bond issued will will be provided by an estimated annual debt series service tax levy of two thousand, two hundred and one thousand, five hundred and eleven. The estimated increase in taxes for residential property valued at two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is twelve dollars and forty-two cents. Provide funding for the Sixty-Fifth Street water main lining in preparation for the future reconstruction of Sixty-Fifth Street with a one million dollar, one million, two hundred thirty-five thousand par bond. Debt service for this portion of the bond issue will be provided by water revenues. Refund the one million, four hundred eighty thousand dollar water revenue bonds, series twenty eleven A with one million, twenty-five thousand par bond. The refunding of the series twenty eleven A bonds with the series twenty twenty-eight refunding will provide estimate interest savings of one hundred thirty-two thousand, two hundred and sixty over the remaining life of the bonds. Debt service on the new bonds will continue to be water revenue bonds. Bids on the twenty twenty-eight general obligation bonds are due in the offices of Ellers and Associates on Tuesday, April twenty eighth, twenty twenty. If the proposal received, received are within the established parameters, the pricing committee is authorized and directed to select the best proposal and award the sale to the respective bidder. Our representative from Ellers Associates is here at the city council and meeting tonight and will provide, to provide the successful bidder as determined by the pricing committee, review documents and provide information that is available only after bidding on the bonds is closed. It would be appropriate for the city council by motion to accept the pricing committee's recommendation in awarding the bond sale to the qualifying buyer. The anticipated closing on the twenty twenty-eight bond is scheduled for May fourteenth, twenty twenty. Thank you for being patient with that long and choppy review of the executive summary. I was a little distracted. So I will pass it to, I think Director Regis is here if there's any, and then we also have somebody here from Ellers. If there's additional comments from staff or Ellers.
Thank you, Mayor. I think what I'll do right now is say that we had very good results this morning and I'll turn it over to Rebecca Kurtz to go into that detail. She's from Ellers and Associates and I'll turn it over to you, Rebecca.
Thank you, Chris. Again, Rebecca Kurtz from Ellers. And I do believe that a sale day report was forwarded to members of the council. If you do have that, I will be kind of providing a summary of that. So as Chris said, we did receive, or we are very happy with the bids that were received this morning. And then at ten thirty, the pricing committee did have a call to discuss the results and did move forward with with awarding the bonds. But in summary, I will start with saying you can see that the par amount changed. With our bids, we did receive a premium, so we were able to reduce the overall par amount to five million, one hundred and twenty thousand. A couple other items I do want to note, we had the bonds rated as we have done in the past and congratulations. Standard and Poor's did affirm the double eight plus rating with a stable outlook for the community. A complete copy of the rating report is included in the package, but as I've done in the past, I would like to take a couple minutes and just give some highlights with the discussion. It was a little different this time compared to some of our past calls, just because- just because of some of the COVID, COVID concerns across across the nation right now and across the world right now. Um S and P Global Ratings assigned its double A plus long-term rating to Richfield Minnesota's 2020A general obligation bonds. At the same time, S and P affirmed the double A plus rating on the previously issued general obligation debt. The outlook is stable. As part of the rating, um S and P recognizes uh considers Richfield's economy as strong. They also recognize that the city's market value grew by 6% over the past year to 3.8 billion in um 2019, which I think is worth noting. That is a a large increase in market value over a year, your time period. And they recognize that that is in part due to the redevelopment and development efforts that are happening within the community. They go on to say the city's market value and net tax capacity have demonstrated strong growth since the 2008 recession and again attributable to the redevelopment projects and appreciation of existing projects. Um S and P goes on to recognize the city's management as being very strong with strong financial policies and practices. And they believe that those strong policies and practices that are in place will help minimize the impact of the COVID-19 and ensuing recession as a result of that. They recognize budgetary, um Richfield's budgetary performance as adequate. Um and they go on to say that the budgetary flexibility is considered very strong. They also recognize Richfield's liquidity as being very strong with the total governmental cash available at 135.2% of um total governmental fund expenditures and 11.8 times the governmental debt service in 2018. So they summarize that by saying, in our view, S and P, the city has strong access to external liquidity if it was ever needed. So I think you can go on and read the the full report, but overall, it was very positive. They recognize the good things happening in the community. And I think it again just continues to be a reflection of the management and the effort that staff and council and all of you together as a team are doing to make sure that the city is running smoothly.
Well, I think we might have lost Rebecca. Maybe she'll come back on. Any other additions from staff before we move on?
No, I think um I think we're good. Um as Rebecca said, we're we received an op uh an offer, a re-offering premium. We're able to um reduce the par amount down to 5.12 million. Um I think we increased the savings on the refunding bond up to 144,000. Um we'll save with the, by reducing the principal of the bond, we will um save interest costs over the life of the bond, which would be substantial over 20 years. And uh we received a true interest cost of 1.91 uh and the, we are estimating 2.1. So looks like Rebecca's back.
I apologize. Just when I got to the best part of my whole report, I lost you. So my my apologies or my apologies. Um I think Chris, Chris covered the best, some of the best news. Our um low bid was 1.9%, which we are recommending moving forward with. Um as a comparison, we had estimated 2.1% in the pre-sale, so it is slightly lower. Um we did, as I mentioned, receive a re-offering premium. And so that meant that we had roughly $230,000 more than what was needed to fully fund the projects that were outlined. And so with that, we were able to reduce the bond size down to 5.12 million compared to the um 5.375 that we had anticipated. What that ultimately means then is that there is less principal, so that will help save on the interest cost over the life of the bond. Um related to the refunding portion from the 2011 bonds, we did see a savings of 144,178, which will be recognized over the remaining 12 years of of that portion of the bond. I'm happy to answer any questions. I apologize that I cut out there for a minute. But as as um Chris and the mayor said, we will be receiving funds on May 14. And the action really is to just accept the the action of the pricing committee from earlier today. But with that, happy to answer any questions you may have on the issue.
Thank you. Any questions from council members? Okay, seeing that there are no questions, um I will make the motion to accept the recommendation of the pricing committee in awarding the sale of the general obligations, uh obligation ones, series 2028 in the original aggregate pricing amount of $5,375,000.
Councilmember Wayland, I'll second.
It has been moved by Mayor Reagan Gonzalez and seconded by Councilmember Wayland. Um any council comments or questions?
Councilmember Supple.
I just wanted to say thank you to the staff and to past leadership for their stewardship that put us into this position so that we could have that double A plus rating. And I, it's it's been years in the making. It's not just something that's happened in the last three months. It's been ongoing leadership and I just want to acknowledge that and thank everybody.
Councilmember Chapman.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple, a couple of comments. One, to uh to our mayor, I've yet to hear the lengthy bond memo that isn't greatly improved by the sound of beautiful children. So I think we never have to apologize for that. And uh and in all seriousness, that's one of my favorite um uh happy, happy consequences of COVID is that kids interrupt meetings all the time. And I want to figure out a way to make that continue to happen after this is all behind us. Um but I also just wanted to share for the benefit of um of our residents at home. I know I I had some questions about this this morning that our city manager and our our uh finance director Regis just confirmed for me. But the bonding that that we're doing right now is for for two things. One, for projects we've already completed and then projects that we're completing now. Um because um we we're doing what we have to in the moment to to maybe put off some bigger expenses. So this is a, this is a cost, a cost savings opportunity. I appreciate particularly you, Director Regis, your, your thoughtful stewardship of our community resources and even um just suggesting this timely move that saved us uh guarded us significant savings in the moment, it sounds like, and over the course of loans. So so thank you, everybody, but special thanks to Director Regis.
Thank you, Councilmember Chapman. I would like to.
Did I get that right, City Manager Rodriguez?
I'd like to um just echo what you shared, Councilmember Chapman. Thank you so much, um specifically to Director Regis and um to our pricing committee in Ellers who um were on the call today looking and making sure that we have, um we have, are getting the best possible offer. Thank you to our mayor Pro Tem for being there at my place while I had to have a really fun emergency root canal this morning. Um and um it's, I also am really thankful for this item coming and and developing the pricing committee just to be safe and ensuring that we are being most prudent um in this time and making sure that we're making smart financial decisions. And as um we see with the outcome, that was a really great strategy and we had a great team helping lead that. So thank you for everyone who was a part of that. And again, um our our residents in our communities just very fortunate to have such excellent staff over the years um and and leadership, helping us get to where we are today, where we do have an exceptional rating um and where we are able to have these kind of savings, short term and long term, um into the future. So thank you, everybody, for that. Any other um comments from council? Analyst Gavina, if you could please take the roll call vote.
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Chapman.
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia.
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you very much. The motion has been approved. The next item is the city manager's report. City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor Reagan Gonzalez. Um before I give my report, I just wanted to say on behalf of staff how very sorry we are about your loss, Councilmember Chapman. And thank you for the beautiful tribute. It was very touching. And um as others have said, celebrating a life well. I have a a number of announcements. I'll just start with the League of Minnesota Cities had a webinar with Governor Walz. It was very encouraging for him. He gave very strong support to a robust bonding bill and also expressed strong support for local government aid. Um I also wanted to give you some more details about what we're doing to deal with the financial fallout from the pandemic. Um our plan for 2020, um we've already instituted a soft hiring freeze. Um we've asked directors to look for where they can defer spending um and capital projects where possible. Uh directors are also working on quantifying the impact, both on the revenue side and on the expenditure side. They're looking for cost savings. Um they're making assumptions on what does it look like for three months? If we have disruptions for three months, for six months and throughout the rest of the year? We'll be pulling that together, sharing it with you um before our meeting with staff uh on goal setting, which is uh that date's been set for May 20th. Um and and please interrupt me with questions as I go along, because I I do have a few announcements. Um we are waiting on some of the tougher decisions um like summer programming until we have to make the decision. Um the decision on summer programming is coming up because we need about a month lead time in order to prepare the pool for opening. Um Amy has been, I'm sorry, Dr. Merkel has been working with Chief Hen Thorne and um Jennifer Anderson uh to determine the criteria for making that decision. We expect to make an announcement in early May. Um the primary criteria is keeping everyone safe. Um and we're also looking though at community impact of those decisions. And then finally, the financial impact. But the primary criteria really is keeping people safe. Um you know, these decisions are, they're made with no joy. Um this has been a a very tough decision for Director Merkel. Um she likes to say she brings the fun to the community. Um and uh we certainly don't want to have to cancel any of our programming. But it's going to be a tough, it would be a tough lift to try and open the pool. So uh more on that soon. Uh we, yes, council member, oh, sorry.
Oh.
Member Chapman.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh thank you, City Manager. Um just, just a question uh about the the summer programming. Uh I know things like the pool are harder to manage. Um I know summer programs, as we've normally done them, um are not uh may or may not be feasible. Um I I assume we are, but I just wanted to ask, are we looking at, you know, programs with with maybe intermediate, older kids being able to engage in outdoor activities at a socially distant uh space, you know, that just because we have, we're we're going to have kids that have um been been in homes for so for so long and we want, are we, are we kind of thinking out of the box in that way with with the staffing those programs?
Yes, and uh Director Merkel's been working on virtual programming and trying to provide that. Um you know, there's, there's learning in all of that. It it takes a long time to edit those videos. Um so we are doing our best to try and pivot and still provide uh what we can in terms of programming. Um the, you know, those things that we can provide that we that we can do safely, we are going to do that. Um as to the details of it, I would, I would have to have uh Director Merkel on the call.
Of course. I know my, my niece is on her way to becoming an Eagle Scout and she's spending 30 days camping and she's doing that in her backyard. And um and and so I know there, there are, we're, we're, there are creative ways to do things we've always done.
And and learning opportunities with all of this. Um any other questions on that? Uh we are planning to offer passport services by appointment only, uh likely starting next week. Uh our staff did a great job. We um we installed some additional plexiglass. It was really hard to get a hold of it because a lot of organizations are trying to get the plexiglass. Um and they're putting together a process where where folks can come in, get their passports and be safe. Um you know, one of the mitigations is that they will just be serving one person at a time and likely limiting the hours um to the morning. Um finally, we will be taking applications for the COVID-19 small giveable loan probably late this week or early next week. And I just want to put this into context and um shout out to Director Stark and his staff. You know, a a loan program like this, we've never had a loan program like this in Richfield. It would have taken months to put this together and they're putting it together in a matter of weeks. So um really appreciate their efforts because it is needed. Um I mentioned this today at our work session, but we've received 700 responses to our COVID-19 resident survey. And uh Communications Manager Neil Ruland is, are there, and his staff are numbers. We should have some summaries for you soon. Um finally, we have been pulling together a citywide resource letter. Um and the resource letter will also renew the offer to those residents who don't have neighbors or family that are able to look in on them and are vulnerable, that they can register with our police department and they will provide services to them. That um that will be in English and in Spanish. And it should hit mailboxes at the end of the week or early next week. Um and then finally, we have had an overwhelmingly positive response to the birthday parades. Um lots of really heartfelt thank yous from residents. Um so it was, you know, during these times, it's really nice to bring some, some, some joy out to folks. Uh and then I'll just close with the fire department had a very successful um drive to collect homemade masks. I really appreciated for those folks that dropped off masks. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Speed Manager Rodriguez. Any comments or questions from council members? Thank you for that update. I think that's really helpful. Um I I think it's going to continue to serve us well to keep getting um updates to the council and to the community at the council meetings on the things that the the city's doing in response to COVID. There's so much that our city staff are doing and, like you said, pivoting on a moment's notice and learning and and um continuing to find ways to keep providing our exceptional services to our residents. And I think these updates are just really helpful so that everybody can really hear and see and understand more behind all of the work that it takes to to do that. And we also get to hear some really great stories. That was one of my hats off was for the parades. The community members have just really appreciated that. So thank you for sharing. The next item, Councilmember Garcia, claims and payroll. That's yours.
Okay, Mayor, you always save the hard one for me. But I will go ahead and I will move claims and payroll.
So Councilmember Supple, second.
Claims and payroll has been moved by Councilmember Garcia and seconded by Councilmember Supple. Claims and Payroll has been moved by Councilmember Garcia and seconded by Councilmember Supple. Analyst Martinez Gavina, could you please take roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Chapman.
Aye.
Councilmember.
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Claims and Payroll has been approved. The next item is Hats Off to Hometown Hits. I will start with Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to let the council know because being being tied to my home, I get I get to see a lot of neighbors going by with their dogs and and their kids and it's just really, really nice. But I was, the other day I was walking with Judy and Raven Moe. And they, and so they were heading to Ededia Park. And and then we ran into Melissa Elman. And we talked for a little while and then she had to go off to work. And I tell you what, I really felt bad because I wanted to go over there and give her a big hug. I couldn't. But it just made me think about how much I'm missing not only you all, but also the staff, you know, we just are our our family. So and I wanted and I wanted to say to to Raven and Judy Moe that at that, you know, they're my neighbors. And so at least when they go walking, you know, we all, I always blow them a kiss and we we give each other an air hug, which is, which is very nice. So continue the good work, staff. And Mayor, at this time, I would like to sign off.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Garcia, for your words and take care. We'll talk to you soon.
Thank you very much. Bye bye.
Councilmember Wayland.
Thank you, Mayor. Don't have a ton to add since we've covered a lot of things already. Just a brief thank you to every everyone who's being patient with the stay at home order, who's distancing when they're out using our parks. It is good to see people out walking around. But just remember to keep following the the six foot distancing rules. Um, the only thing I want to add is just a comment from our work session that we reviewed the results of our community survey that had gone out prior to the the start of the pandemic and was much broader and focused than the the COVID one that was just a couple of weeks ago. Um, and wanted to to lift up the Public Works Department and all the great work that they're doing. They got several of the things that they offer, the our transportation systems, our street plowing, our public water. It got lifted up as as being exceptional, being higher than our our peers, both in Minnesota and nationally. So just wanted to give them a shout out here as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Wayland. Councilmember Supple.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to mention that the Richfield Foundation has been awarded funds from the Minnesota Disaster Recovery Fund to support local businesses and nonprofits affected by COVID-19. The deadline to apply for funds is May 15, 15th, rather. And grants will be awarded to either, one, organizations that are helping those most affected by the pandemic, particularly those who are not eligible for other forms of aid. And two, to Richfield-based nonprofits and small businesses, particularly those led by immigrants and people of color. And so you can go to the Richfield Foundation's webpage to find the applications for that. And so we're encouraging people to please apply. And City Manager Rodriguez mentioned many of the things I was going to say, but I do want to do a shout out to a group that hasn't been mentioned. We've been thanking all of the essential workers and everybody who am public safety people. But I also want to thank their families because I know it's hard when your mom or dad or sister or brother is going out there and doing all this for the community. And so I really want to thank the families for all the support that they're giving to the people that are out there working for all of us in the community. And thank you again to all of those people that are doing that for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Supple. Councilmember Chapman.
Thank you, Mayor. Lot, a lot of thanks in my heart tonight. I want to lift up our Friends of Wood Lake Virtual Gala and the the online auction and bidding that's still taking place. And folks want to participate in that. The the easiest way to find it is probably through the Facebook page. If you just Google Wood Lake Nature Center and then right on the front of that page, you can go to the the bidding page. You can get beautiful artwork, clothes. If there's belly dancing lessons, any any number of things. And and so that that extends through Friday here. And it's just a great way, I think, I think we're going to see that this virtual gala has been a great success. And we're thankful to the Friends of Wood Lake for for making it so and for everybody who participated and everybody who bought a a ticket for for the country club and said, I'm going to keep my ticket and I'm going to eat at Local Roots and I'm going to and have that meal picked up. And we're going to say they 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 didn't take their tickets back. So thank you, thank you for everybody who participated in that. Want to say a special thank you to Director John Stark. Just like City Manager Rodriguez mentioned, for prioritizing and pioneering a a program for small business owners. At the end of, at the end of this, this crisis, we still want the backbone of our community to be here and they will be. And so we're grateful for our Richfield Foundation, but really grateful for your initiative and your leadership, Director Stark. And finally, I just wanted to to say a quick word of thanks to all the healthcare workers at Mount Albik Care Facility with who who took care of mom, they took care of my uncle, they took care of my my grandmother there. And they they are their heroes. Yeah, I'm grateful. And and we're so glad for for their lives and like Councilmember Supple said, for their families. God bless you guys.
Thank you, Councilmember Chapman. Folks already shared a lot of what I wanted to share, but I'll I'll just reiterate two of two items that were already shared. We have so much to be thankful for in terms of the community survey. So this is a survey that's gone that went out. And we haven't done a a community survey from the city government to our residents for many, many years. And this is the first time in quite a while that we picked it back up and just so much to be proud about. People love living in Richfield. We provide excellent quality services. People are happy. They feel connected and and, you know, this is, this is something that we all know. But the results are in our community survey. So it's just another point that we can all be proud of. Again, across the whole community, from our city staff doing exceptional work to our leaders continuing to lead and pass the baton from elected to elected. Our residents, our community organizations, we are all a part of that. And it was really exciting to see things that we can continue to grow, like our arts and cultural offerings and and other things that people want to see more of. So I'm just very thankful and I look forward to sharing those results with our community partners to say, hey, how do we use this to keep building Richfield as an exceptional community to live? And I'm excited to have this in form our work moving forward. So again, so much praise to our staff, to our whole community for making the city such a great place to live. It is, and again, it's in our survey. We have, we knew all of this, but it is in in this survey. The results align with that as well. And then the birthday parades were mentioned with our staff going out and making our just young kiddos in our in our community happy and celebrating their birthdays. And there's so many examples that have been mentioned. So again, the volunteers donating masks. We have so many folks donating food and and sending cards to our staff as well and our frontline workers. People writing things out in the in this, you know, sidewalks and the streets. Our community is coming together. So thank you, everybody, for that continued hope and inspiration. And I also know that there's a lot of difficulty that we're all experiencing right now. And I know that it's very frustrating and extremely hard. And and I just ask to please take care of yourselves in this. This is not going to be over soon and the impacts will be pretty monumental and in ways that we're not even anticipating. And so we're just going to have to keep working together to support one another. But I ask everyone also to please not forget about taking care of yourself and what does that look like? And how can you find those moments of joy? Because that that is also really important to our resiliency and our recovery. So please take some time to take care of yourself. And the last thing that I'll add that wasn't shared already is our Richfield Rotary Club has just been such a great partner in all of this. So Richfield Rotary recently donated over $2,000 to our recreation department. And we want to thank them for their gen, for their very generous donations. So some of the money went to support doggy bag holders and bags for the new dog park with a donation of over $1,000. And then they contributed an additional $1,000 towards the construction of our universally inclusive playground project. So that is a huge donation and that's going to happen at Augsburg Park. So we just appreciate their donation. The Richfield Rotary has been supportive for the to the Richfield Recreation for for many years and over time. And we thank them once again for for their great work and contributions. And I'll just make a little plug as a Rotary member. It's such a great organization to be a part of. They're doing great volunteer work in the midst of COVID as well. So they're just another organization made up of our neighbors on the front lines, taking care of one another. So please consider joining Rotary. We'd love to have you. So I think that's all I have for today. And with that, we will adjourn. Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.